That's it, that. Don't start yet.
Oh, no, we're not. We're waiting for Mr. Dushak.
Dushak is trying to get the battery charged. Ain't the hot battery. Andy, you ready?
Yes.
How's that? That better? No, I'm using, I'm using my phone. Hey, I'm, I'm on, I'm doing the wire, so we're gonna go that way. Alright.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Alright. If something happens, just call mine over back.
Andy, can you hear me?
Yes.
See if you're ready. You all ready? Okay, let's go ahead and start again.
Showtime.
Good evening. I'd like to suggest everybody turn their phones off if you will. And it's so wonderful to see so many smiling faces here today. I'm, I'm Agnes Hahnus, and this is Sarah Mayberry.
And we're gonna run in, we got time.
Can you, can you hear me, or do I need to move it up? Okay, up a little more. Oh, there we go, I can hear it too. Okay. Yes, and the LaGrange Citizens Alliance, we have myself, and where's Grady? And...
Neil?
Was it Neil? Where's Neil?
Is that him?
There he is.
There he is, Neil Rappzenberg, and Mike Mayberry, and my husband Louis. And they're going to do the timing tonight. Okay. And we figure you have come to evaluate the candidates for the council. We hope to shed some light on this. The LaGrange dignitaries, Jan Dockery couldn't make it tonight because she had a previous engagement. Otherwise, she would have been here. And we have Jamie Fabry with Chamber Director, and we have Greg Moreau, Emergency Management Coordinator, back on the back row. And we also have Dusty Lethrum, Councilman, and Quentin Gonzalez. And anybody else I need to introduce? No? Okay. Neil Rappzenberg is going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you understand that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna do the text of the flag. Honored and dedicated to the flag, our pledge of allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Jamie Fabry is going to have a prayer.
God, please bless these men and women who've stepped forward to offer their guidance and wisdom and leadership to the city of LaGrange, and grant them understanding, patience, and persistence in their campaign to protect our beloved city of LaGrange.
Thank you. And I'd also like to thank KVOD and KLOS for being here and providing live broadcast, and Fayette County Record for livestreaming us with Andy Baylin and Gary Dushak. Look, we've got, we've got some real celebrities here today. Okay. Also, we'd like to thank Fayette County Extension for the room, because it's nice to be able to come in.
She's a man.
Oh! She did get to make it.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, I want to introduce the candidates, and we're gonna do it in alphabetical order, and that's the way they're sitting, in alphabetical order. So, Arthur Bosky, Sandy Hooper, Chris Jornigan, Ken Taylor, Kathy Weisum, and Violet Zabronik. And we're gonna start at the end of the table, and we'll give you each 10 minutes to introduce yourself and tell your, why you're the best for the job.
I'm first? Okay. Okay. I'm Arthur Bosky, and I've been in LaGrange for almost 35 years. I just decided that I wanted to run for the City Council and see what I can do for the city of LaGrange with, in my ward, and help my ward, people in my ward. If they got any questions, come talk to me, and I can answer the questions.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Hooper, and I'm running for City Council seat for Ward 1. I've lived in LaGrange for almost five years now. I moved here to be closer to my brother and sister-in-law, who have lived here for over 20 years. I was born and raised in San Antonio to a military family. I've been blessed to have lived in a number of places, not just here in Texas, but also in other states in the United States and overseas. All of these opportunities to live in different places have given me not only a chance to meet and understand different cultures, but also to hone my communication skills. As anyone who's grown up in the military knows, you move around a lot, must make friends quickly, and cannot be shy in meeting people. I've learned not to judge people because of the way they look, or act differently, or speak differently. They also, it also helped me to be a better listener and consider other points of view. I have a varied background, in my work background as well. While I've worked for banks mostly in my career, I've also worked for a software company. I learned to speak geek, which they have their own language, and no offense to geek, because you are the blood, for the technology company, but it is an interesting language. I've also worked for a law firm, a collection agency. I've managed a popular nightclub in Houston, which really honed my communication skills. I, my job prior to coming to LaGrange was with a company that worked with an economic development company. And I was the liaison between my company and the EDC. So I have a good understanding and a foundation of how EDCs work. All of the positions I've had in my career were working at the executive level, either working for VPs, presidents, or owners of companies. And while I was not always included in the decision-making process, I was most definitely involved in the planning and execution of everything from budgeting to policies and procedures to interacting with different departments and groups like HR, payroll, and even marketing. All of these skills make me uniquely qualified to serve on the LaGrange City Council, and ensure that I understand and be able to make the decisions for the people of not only Ward 1, but for those, all citizens in LaGrange. I do do a lot of volunteering in LaGrange for things that Main Street puts on and the fair. I do draw the line at drawing, falling out of an airplane because I understand one of the people, companies that we do volunteer work is gonna have a tandem dive, and I'll keep my feet on the ground, thank you. But I will be there to support my friends. I'm also involved in a program with LGSD for kindergarteners. We go in once a month, we teach them financial literacy through stories and activities, all designed to help young kids understand money going forward in their future. I feel LaGrange is posed to become an even greater community than it already is. And I think LaGrange should be leading the move forward to the future. Progress happens whether we want it to or not. The key is for LaGrange to manage their growth and have a strategic plan in place to manage their growth. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Chris Jornigan. I'm asking for your vote for the LaGrange Council, Ward 4. I would like to thank the LaGrange Citizens Alliance for giving me the opportunity to speak. In July of last year, I put in an application for appointment and was appointed in July by the City Council. I'm North Carolina originally, but moved here as soon as I could. My wife and two kids are here. In the last seven months, nine months, I have learned a lot of what makes a city operate. With my current job position, I'm responsible for managing accounts, maintaining budgets, monitoring overhead expenses. I will be a great asset to make decisions for the city and our community. I successfully interact with employees and effectively maintain contracts with stockholders. I know my involvement in decision-making will be in the best interest of the city of LaGrange. I want what's best for the future and the future for our families. I am confident, if elected, to serve for LaGrange. Ward 4, I'll be loyal, committed, and strive to make a great place for us all to live. Thank you for your town.
My name's Ken Taylor. I was on the council, the City Council, from 2017 to 2021 as a Ward 1 councilperson. I'm seeking election for Ward 2 for several reasons. One, because I want to make a difference for the city of LaGrange and its citizens. Two, I want to work with the council and the city manager to find ways to improve the city's drainage system in various areas of the town. We've had way too many flooded homes during large rain events. Three, I feel it's time to review some of the critical processes of the city's business. I'll give you a few examples. One, cybersecurity. Two, the environmental permitting activities of the city. Employee safety training, human resource policies, cash management safeguards, just to name a few. I promise as a councilperson to review the agenda, to do my research on the agenda items, and ask the questions that I feel my constituents would ask if they had the opportunity. I will produce a better working relationship, promote a better working relationship with existing local business owners while encouraging new businesses to come to our city. I would appreciate your vote. And last but not least, please pray for Ukraine.
My name is Kathy Weisum. I am the incoming candidate for City Council in Ward 1. I've recently retired after 40 years of working between the county of Fayette and the state of Texas. I have filled the roles of Assistant County Auditor, Deputy Sheriff, and most recently, a supervisor-manager in Child Protective Services. I want to continue to serve the city and the community. I do like community involvement, and I've spent a lot of my time in community involvement through all of the activities that I've done. I've always been willing to go out and talk to people and explain how things work, talk to them about the way things can work better, things they can do to protect themselves. I can tell you this, I won't agree with everyone all the time. I'm not perfect. I can't make everyone happy. I can't single-handedly solve every problem. But I can work hard to address the issues and to find solutions to the problems when they're brought to my attention. I don't mind looking at what needs to be fixed, if it needs to be fixed, or looking at things that are working to see how they can work better. I can promise to do my best, not only for Ward 1, but for all the citizens in LaGrange.
Good evening. I'm Violet Zabronik, also known as Patsy. I'm your present council member of Ward 2. I'm a former employee at the city of LaGrange for 34 years, and I feel that I know the problems and concerns of Ward 2 as well as the entire city. I have served on several city committees during my tenure, the General Services Committee, Utility Enterprise Committee, the Tourism Partnership Grant Committee. Also now serve on the Fireman's Pension Board and the Texas Municipal Gas Corporation Board. I'm a Fayette County native and have lived in the city of LaGrange for over six years, and in Ward 2 for 26 years, and I know the needs of the city. I have an open-door policy, and I will always listen to your questions, concerns, or complaints. No problem to give my phone number out, you can call me at any time. I have done and will continue to do my best to give you the answers and actions you need. We have a great city. I'm proud to be from LaGrange. And I look forward to serving you as council member of Ward 2 for the next two years. Thank you.
Okay, we will start the questioning. Sarah's gonna do the, do the questions. And we're gonna start at the top of the table. And Arthur, you'll have two minutes to answer the question. And then, after he gets through, if there's anybody else that wants to speak, please raise your hand. If you feel really strongly on an issue, we want to hear from you. But if we let everybody talk, we'll be here till 10 o'clock at least. So we will just, if you really feel strongly about it, raise your hand. And, and you will get one minute. And okay, let's see, I've got everything that I needed to say. Okay. Let's go.
Thank you. Is that a long one?
Yeah.
Well, after listening to the opening statements, I have to comment that this is an impressive group of citizens in LaGrange. And it's gonna be hard for the citizens and the voters to choose, but I want to thank you personally for participating. Can you hear me? Now, is that better?
And I forgot to welcome Jan Dockery after she got in.
Is that better? Okay, thank you. Mr. Bosky, you're the top of the table and first of the alphabet. So you get the best question, right? Would you be in favor of livestreaming LaGrange City Council meetings? If so, why? And if not, why not? Or why?
I really do like streaming, you know, the meetings. You know, I want people to know what was going on. And the people that can't come to the City Council meetings, they can see us on the screen. It'd be good to know people what's going on, and tell people what's going on.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? You want to pass them on?
I am in favor of livestreaming meetings. However, I will say that we keep in mind that that's only a one-sided process for those on the other end of those meetings. When we're livestreaming, folks don't get to participate, or to comment, or do petitions as they do if they can come in person. However, I know there are people who can't come in person, and so livestreaming is the way of today. Everything is on the media, everything is on the internet, and it gives everybody access.
I believe it would show our oath that we took, open government, accountability, transparency, honesty, and service.
Any other comments? Alright. Thank you. We'll move on to Ms. Hooper. Sorry. Question number two. How would you propose to address the drainage issues in the city of LaGrange?
Well, I know that there are drainage issues. I don't know a lot about how the process works, but I would expect that we would do an evaluation, figure out what needs to be done, put a plan in place. I'm a fiscal conservative, so I want to know how much it's gonna cost before we do the work. But I think that we need, it's like anything else, you've got to study, you've got to figure out what, what the most important issues with the drainage is, and then go from there.
Mr. Taylor?
I know the city's working on some solutions for drainage issues in several areas. But the process, in my opinion, is way slow, as people have complained. I would encourage the city to take on some short-term action plans, one being potentially cleaning some barge ditches in some areas where homes have been flooded. I know of one in particular. And then, using some cameras and check the existing drainage system that we have in the city for built-up silt and rocks and everything else. I had a situation in my house where my drain wasn't, wasn't working. I didn't know if it was working or not, and when they redid the city, I wanted to get another drain put in, which we couldn't do because of all, everything underneath. But actually, we went down to Beefhead Ditch, and the drain that I had coming from my curb into Beefhead Ditch had a block of foam that they tried to, I don't know who they is, but they tried to fill in a bad spot with their main connection. And that was blocking half of the pipe. And if myself and the contractor hadn't went down to Beefhead Ditch and found that, we would have never known that actually it works pretty good once you clean out half of the pipe. So how many other situations do we have like that?
Ms. Zabronik?
Just recently, the city had a study done by BethCo Engineering. Mr. Tim Sanders came to our council meeting and explained the drainage issues and showed us maps showing all where the drainage problems were and how it could be eliminated. This is a big job, and a very expensive job. And so the city is now taking each one at a time to study, to see what can be done to help the drainage in the city. And, you know, this was a very, very unusual time when you had two big floods in one time, just in one year. It's unusual. I've been around a long time. My garage flooded. But, I mean, this is what happens. But we aren't working on that. We're working with BethCo to try to get the issues straightened.
And we have been working on the drainage. This is the map that she's talking about. I have it here with me, and I try to carry it and pay attention to it, to see where we're at. I also know that we're applying for grant monies to get money from the American Rescue Funds through the government, General Land Office and the Council of Governments once the funding distribution is determined, so that we can fund these projects. They are extremely expensive, and they will take some time to complete. Of course, we can look at short-term measures too. We have been discussing those and trying to figure out how's the best way to handle those. But for large amounts of water and large rain events like we had, there will be major things that are needed. The thing to keep in mind is these are targeted areas of the city, but all citizens are going to be paying for these items that we have to fund. And so it's very important that we work on getting this grant funding to help pay for these projects.
Any other comments? We'll move on to the next one. This will be Mr. Jornigan's first question. How would you advise city officials to improve communication with victims of flooding by city drainage problems?
I think communication is the main thing. I think we need to be more informative, set up monthly meetings, bi-monthly, just to inform them. I think a lot of the citizens are getting hurt because they don't know where we stand at, or where we're at in our process. So I think the main thing is start communication between the ones that's being affected, because the ones that's not, doesn't care.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment? We'll move to Mr. Taylor. If the city has already received monies specifically for flood mitigation after Hurricane Harvey, do you have any knowledge, and if you do, would you share? Can you, can you hear me now? Alright. I'll start over. If the city has already received monies specifically for flood mitigation after Hurricane Harvey, and you have any knowledge of this, would you please share if you know how that money was used or plans are planned to be used?
I suspect some of the money's been used with BethCo Engineering to do the study that Kathy talked about, and looking at all the areas of the city. But again, I would wish that the city would do some short-term repairs. I mean, go up on North, on Jackson Street, up above, down below the Sacred Heart, where at least several houses have been flooded multiple times. And nothing has been done in the area on a short-term basis. I know it's gonna take a long term to replace the big drainage pipe, but the little things can be done. There's weeds, there's brush in addition that our city employees could do, clean out, and help the water flow, and not build up and flood housing. And then, again, with the money that we've received, then go ahead with the project. I would advocate that we put a project manager on those projects to push the project. When you're relying on a contractor and an engineer that's not under your money, you're letting them run the project, rather than you as an entity run the project. So I know staff is hard to get, and everybody's trying to do their regular job and do some of the project management. But if you want to get some of this dumb stuff done, you need to hire people to ride herd on the contractors and ride herd and get what you paid for, and get it done in a timely manner.
Any further comments?
I would say that some of the money has been used to work with generators for the well stations. I know that we have talked about that, because some of that is going to be required in order to keep water and electricity online. Some of that came up after the freeze, but the delay on getting the money caused us to use the money for those purposes when the money came in. So I do know that we have spent some of the money that we've already received on generators for those well stations.
Any others? Ms. Weisum, would you support an outside review of the city's financial and operations records? If so, why? If not, why?
I do support that, and we have an annual outside audit every year that is required, and that we do every single year. It's presented to the city, and they look at all of our financial records for that audit. So we have that done every year.
When I was on the council, I actually tried to get that program started. It's on the list of projects, but it's now been changed to a survey, rather than actually bringing in an outside consulting firm to look at our processes in the city. One of the city's major strengths is its long-term employees, but that's also a weakness. We're losing some people already, and you've got some more people in the pipeline that are gonna retire. And if you don't capture that knowledge and look for innovative ways to do their job and to make sure the safeguards are in place, you're missing a heck of an opportunity. It's not a cheap deal, but it needs to be done, and you need to look at a lot of different areas in the city to make sure we're taking care of all of our business at the cheapest, not cheapest, probably the least cost alternative.
There are checks and balances of our, of ours, all our entities inside City Hall and all that. And our audit, we have done every year, just like we always have. We have a very good fund balance, and the auditor keeps saying we're doing a great job.
Mr. Taylor?
The financial audit is done every year. I'm not talking about a financial audit. I'm talking about business process audit, that we look at the way we do business and make sure we have safeguards in place, and actually capture that knowledge, but again, before the employees retire. And then you've lost all of that knowledge.
I just wanted to say that working for a bank, we go through audits all the time. And people have a tendency to think it's a gotcha thing. Oh, we found we're doing this bad, we found we're doing that. Really what audits are about are looking for what's been done properly. If we're, we're human. People are human. They're gonna make mistakes. That's just the way it is. And audits are to focus on those kinds of things, not to say, oh my gosh, you did it wrong, but to say, okay, this is where we need to improve. These are the processes and procedures that we need to follow, and actually help you run a city or a business better because you have, not an oversight, but you have processes and procedures in place that, that help you do well.
I don't have a question.
Oh. Alright.
What's your question?
I don't have a question.
It's her turn.
It's my turn, that's why I passed it.
Here's a call.
Yes.
This is regarding the Municipal Gas Acquisition Supply Corporation. Please share your knowledge of the above corporation, its relationship to the city of LaGrange, and its assets, and past expenditures, and how it is governed, how it is governed. And that's it, okay.
The Municipal Gas Corporation, I can't remember what year it all started, but I do know that it was during the tenure of Don Cavonitz when he was mayor. They went to the city of, they were in the city of Brenham, and this Municipal Gas Corporation people contacted Brenham to see if they would be interested. And it's selling gas to cities through the vehicle of the city of LaGrange. And I can't give you figures. I don't have all of those figures of what it is. But it has made us a lot of money. The city has very fortunate to have been waded into this program. And the money that comes out of Municipal Gas Corporation is kept in a separate account and used only for special projects of the city of LaGrange. And you'd have to have Sean or someone more than me to explain all the expenditures and all that.
Mr. Taylor?
I believe that Municipal MuniGas, as it's called, was formed, I believe, in 96. Kathy's, Patty's right. Brenham had the opportunity and decided against it, and LaGrange took it on. And actually, if you look at a lot of the And actually, if you look at a lot of the parks and things that the city has done, that money has come from the minigas contract. Basically, we are the conduit that the minigas people buy the gas and then they run it, if you will, through our books and then they sell it to other municipalities and cities and we get a little money off of it. And that goes into our capital improvement pro, project bucket. It's not spent on O and M kind of activity. So we are very blessed as a city to have those contracts and to make a little money off of them over the years that actually pays for a lot of the things our citizens enjoy and it doesn't come out of their, you know, property tax, if you will.
Any other comments? Can you hear me now? Too loud? Okay. This question goes to the first question. We're back at the top of the table. Mr. Boski. What is your vision for the future of LaGrange?
I think we need like some more businesses and, you know, we can have more businesses and see what we can do to help them out, you know. You know, I think there's a lot of things going on that, you know, a lot of people are going to base drop to, you know, they come over here and we can try to help them out.
Are there any other comments? We have several people.
I'd like to share my vision of LaGrange. My vision is like a new bride to be, something old, something new and something blue. Something old that I would like to see us really focus on is to return to some of the days gone by in our downtown area. People used to come, they worked hard, they came to the downtown area, they came to eat, they came to talk, they came to buy groceries, buy clothes and all on our square. If you look at towns around us, and I went to, I know we're not at Fredericksburg by any means, but Fredericksburg has 12 events this coming weekend in their little town area. Something new, we need to recruit new retail businesses and then something blue. We have an asset right on the edge of town called Colorado River that we are not utilizing and you, we, there are nice ideas to bring in tourists if we could. So I'll stop there. Give me the call.
Ms. Abrahamic?
My vision for, is for community and oneness. Even though our city is growing, I hope that we can continue to come together to help each other and that we never lose that small-town feeling. I want our city to see each other as close neighbors or even family, not just as people who share a zip code. This town is my home and it has been for many years and I love this town. The people here are family and friends and I ultimately would want everyone who resides here to feel about LaGrange the same way I feel.
Ms. Weiselman? I wanted to say that I also would like to keep this as a small community town. There are things that we have here, such as second chance, where our ministerial alliance, our churches get together and they run this for our community and they help those people who need it. Amen. Our food pantry, we have our Meals on Wheels. And I know Meals on Wheels is more of a national program, it's not just here, but the people that are here that serve our local people. You will find that we have volunteers that volunteer from many groups and they do it because they live here, they know people and because we are a community and I want us to keep that part. We're going to have growth, we're going to have other things coming, but my vision is to keep those things that make us what we are.
Ms. Hooper. In your opinion, what is LaGrange's greatest asset?
I would say without a doubt it would be its people. I've lived here for five years, I've met some amazing people, friendly people, business owners, working hard, trying to make a living and be a small community. I do believe that we do need to grow. As my cohort over here said, we need to bring businesses in, we need to bring revenue in. If we're going to do a lot of things that we need to do for the city, we're going to need revenue. And I'm not saying let everyone and their mother come in. I think that one of the processes that the Economic Development Committee needs to do, that's their function. Their function is to attract business, make LaGrange a good place for them to come and open businesses. I think if we have a strategic plan in place for like the next five years, 10 years, we can grow LaGrange to be still a small-town environment, but with more business, more people and just make it a better place.
Ms. Abrahamic?
We're established as a centralized hub for Austin, Houston, San Antonio, it's a metroplex. But we're new, we've got rolling hills, blue mountains, we have the river, but we're not doing anything to bring that people, people in. But we don't promote and capitalize on things that brings businesses forward downtown. We have to, we have these assets to attract and we fail to support the businesses. We need to be actively targeting businesses and people we want, or we'll be stuck with what we get.
Ms. Abrahamic?
I firmly agree that LaGrange's greatest asset are the residents of this city and the quality of life we have here. A small town with a hometown atmosphere that pulls together in times of need to help those less fortunate.
Any other comments? Next question is Mr. Jernigan's. How would you approach the future growth of LaGrange?
Can I pass on this right now? Passing this question and I'll come back to it.
How would you, I'm sorry.
Can I pass this question and come back to it?
Sure, absolutely. Okay, we'll come back to that. Mr. Taylor? How would you encourage the city of LaGrange to work with the LaGrange Chamber of Commerce for the welfare of the city's business community?
The collaboration with the LaGrange Chamber of Commerce and our business community, our city of LaGrange budget for the community economic development states three things. One, attract new businesses. Two, work for local business for retention and expansion. And three, encourage small businesses development for startups, expansion in the downtown area. So the answer is our Main Street, a new coordinator and Mr. Parks and the Economic Development Manager, Mrs. Garlic and the Chamber of Commerce Manager, Jamie who's here tonight, all work together for, with two-way communications between those entities and all of the businesses to go talk to the businesses, listen to the businesses and find out what they need to flourish and then also go out to recruit businesses. We need to be out looking for other opportunities that are out in the real world that can come to us so we can choose. You can either manage the change or change manage you. And I would rather be the one managing it rather than it managing me.
Any comments on that one? So we'll move to Ms. Weiselman. What is your opinion of each city ward holding quarterly meetings?
If there is an interest in each city ward to hold quarterly meetings, then we should hold quarterly meetings. As a representative of a ward, I am available to folks to answer questions and if one of the mediums for that to happen is a ward meeting, then certainly we can put that together. However, I know that in different organizations I've been in, when we've tried to have meetings of those type, it's not always easy to generate interest and to have people come to them. People want information and they don't always want to come to meetings. If it works, I'm for it.
I agree if it would work, but I just don't see that, people are busy nowadays and we do have council meetings and the council meetings is where you can ask questions, you have more access to the public and so, but I mean, I'd be more in favor of it if they want it, we'll, we'll host it.
Any comments on that issue? Okay. All right. So Ms. Abrahamic? Yes. What do you, in your opinion, what do you consider the most important issue currently facing the city of LaGrange?
From what we've seen, when we have people come to the council meetings, it's the drainage problem. I do think that that's the biggest issue right now that we have. Of course, now when it's dry, you don't hear from them because we don't, we don't have any rain, so it's okay. But drainage is an issue here in LaGrange and I agree with Ken Taylor that maybe if we cleaned out our things and go have a routine maintenance program of driving the streets, wherever the inlets are, to clean these inlets out, I think that would help. But I do think that that's one of the biggest problems we have is our drainage issues here in LaGrange, as far as I know.
Thank you. Any further comments from anyone?
I also want to say that that is our major issue, but one of our major issues along with other people is retaining and keeping staff that do know what they're doing and knowing their jobs. And I will say that I asked some questions about this and I know that 56% of our staff right now have over 10 years of tenure and 23% have been here over 20 years. So that is sort of an aging workforce and to get young people interested to come in and work and do the jobs that we need done in the city is also going to be an issue facing us because we can't fix the drainage, we can't fix any of our issues if we don't have the people with the knowledge to do that.
Taylor?
It takes me back to what I said earlier. Our greatest strength is also our employees, but it's also our greatest weakness. We have a lot of people that have, some people that have retired. I've heard through the grapevine, we've got a couple of really important people in the city that may be retiring in the not-too-distant future. So trying to manage that is a very difficult job. We also have aging assets. If you look, our city was incorporated in 1854. That's only 168 years ago. So when you start thinking about the drainage system, the sewer system, the water system, roads, everything, to try to maintain as well as we have with a tax rate of point two zero nine three for a hundred is, is a challenge. And so we've got to continue to do the right thing with the money we have and not raise our rates.
Any further comments? Mr. Boski? All right, we move back to the top of the table. Ms. Boski. How can the citizens of LaGrange and the city of LaGrange contribute to improving its image?
That's a hard question. I think I'd pass the seat with us. It's a hard question to answer and I don't know what the... I think I'll pass on that one.
All right. Would anyone else like to comment?
I know we have a lot of code enforcements and regulations in the city. I know we have enforcement issues where we're short-staffed and can't enforce them. The answer I got is to ask, if we aren't going to enforce the codes and regulations, why do we have them? Get rid of them. I know we could improve the employment and hire an enforcement officer in the next budget. We need to, we need one and that's his solely job is to enforce it and not get pulled away for other projects.
One of the things that active city does really well is keep it as clean as we do. With Lloydell on the street sweeper all the time and with the trash pickups that we have routinely and then the ones that we have several times a year certainly help. Though we do have some areas in the town that people talk to me about and I know they've been to the city council about trying to get cleaned up and so, and it's very difficult. So I would believe the city needs to come up with either some more detailed ordinances to take care of some of those areas because we want our city to be clean, beautiful, crisp so when people do come through, they are, they say, wow, you know, I may want to move here. And we do have a lot of people moving there anyway, so we want to keep it clean and perfect.
Any further comments? All right. Ms. Hooper. Would you favor a review of city ordinances that are not enforced and if so, how?
Would I, I'm sorry, would you read the question again?
Let me repeat that.
Okay.
It's a little bit general. How would you be in favor of a review of city ordinances that are not being enforced and if so, why and how?
Well, yes, if they're not being enforced, then we should review why they're not being enforced. Are they out of date? Are there no reasons for them anymore? So yes, a review would be necessary and if, if they need to be enforced and we need to figure out a way to get them enforced, I do believe that we're a little shorthanded in that area with people that are able to enforce those. So, but a review, yes, definitely.
Any further comments?
I do think it's a good idea to review periodically any ordinances that we have, but I want to caution and keep in mind that sometimes we have to really read the ordinance to see what it says, to see if it's being enforced or not enforced. I think that we have had some comments about ordinances not being enforced, but technically things aren't meeting the ordinance. And some of the specific examples are some of the properties we, that Mr. Taylor mentioned earlier that folks are complaining about. It never hurts to review to see where we're at. Times change, people change and so if we need to review things, certainly I'm in favor of doing that, but keeping in mind that we just have to remember what they do say in the first place to make sure.
No further comments on that? Okay. All right, this is, I lost my place. Mr. Taylor, you, no, Mr. Jernigan. Thank you. In your opinion, why are residential and business areas that have not historically flooded, why are they now flooding in moderate to heavy rainfall?
I think we're trying to fix a problem and throw stuff at it instead of actually doing the research to figure out where the real problem is, but reject directing water, which is causing back usage in other areas in the town. And they're throwing quick fixes at it. I think we need to get somebody from outside engineering to come look at it and see, get their opinion from it instead of just going with one.
Any further comments? Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Please share any knowledge that you have of the city's Economic Development Board and their collaboration with Blinn College.
I'm not sure exactly what's happening between the Economic Development Board and the Blinn College in Schulenburg. I do have a question about how well is that college working in Schulenburg and if it's working well, great, and if it's not, why? I would advocate that not only do we look at the Blinn College situation, but I would really like to see the city or the Economic Development Board to take a look at TSTC in Waco and try to get some sort of collaboration going with them so that we have kids and maybe even adults in the area that would love to learn a skill, not necessarily a college degree, and be able to support some of the industry that we do have in the area. So if I could, I would love to see that at least try to happen. I know that TSTC has got colleges in various different places, but nothing in this area. It would surely help some of the people in this area that don't want to go to college.
Ms. Abrahamic?
Oh, Ms. Weiselman? I'm going to go ahead since I have. Okay, that's all right. Okay, I did ask about the Blinn College and one of the projects that they're working right now, on right now is called the If I Had a Hammer Project, where they bring in fifth graders and introduce them to trades early on to see if that's something that they're interested in. They also are going to be participating in the LaGrange Career Fair on April 14th and they provided contacts for local high schools and encouraging them to participate as well. So that's kind of what's working right now as far as the collaboration. The fifth graders are coming from schools all across the county and I know that the EDC represents LaGrange, but the thought is that if they're involving all of the students, any of these students could be working in our area in a trade at any point in time and the more students that we can get involved with the college, the more the resources we can have in the future.
Kathy just said the things that I wanted to say and that's true about this Hammer Program. That was partnership with the EDC to, to promote skilled trades for these kids that don't want to go to college and I think it's a great idea.
I do want to add though that I also agree of bringing anybody here that can help augment our trade, trade resources. As Mr. Taylor stated, technical colleges is a great idea. I had said something like that not too long ago with some of the properties that we now bake, it might be good locations to put something in like that if they were available. they might be good locations to put something in like that if they were available.
All right, Ms. Woski. And this will be the next-to-last question. It's about Ryan, yes. If you could have one wish granted for the city of LaGrange, what would that be?
Right now, it would be that we only have enough rain that we can handle, and that our drainage would be fixed easily, and that's a very tough one. It's going to be a long-term process, and I know that there's gonna be people continuing to be upset about drainage issues. I've had water in my own house, she's had water in her garage. Other people here have experienced issues with drainage, and so I'm very interested in that, but my one wish would be that we would, if I could wave a magic wand, then we could easily fix that, drill under the railroad tracks, and do all of the things we need to do to augment that.
My one wish is for my wife that we could get back a clothing store like the one we lost in Vales, so that she doesn't have to go to other cities to buy clothes. And if I could, the second wish is to fill the other buildings that we have downtown with some sort of retail. If you go walk around downtown, there's several buildings that are just sitting there, and we're, we're losing tax revenue, they're losing rental revenue, so we need to get out and hustle and bring in some businesses to fill those buildings.
Ms. Brown?
I guess I'm next, right?
Yes. No, I don't think so. I think we go back, and Mr. Jernigan asks if we come back to here.
Oh, okay.
And then this will be the final question, and then we'll go into the candidates, and they'll be wrapping up and have two minutes to make their final speech, and we're actually going to start with Ms. Brown, so at the end of the alphabet. All right, Mr. Jernigan. How would you approach the future growth of LaGrange?
Right now, I'd say it would be the lack of growth compared to the census in 2010 to 2020. We're not promoting businesses, they're moving, they're closing. People are moving off the square due to the lack of business, and rent has become into an office-plex instead of a retail-plex. So we're not being, we're not targeting the business downtown for retail, it's, everything's turned into offices.
Any other comments? This is the final, now. Here was the final question. Thank you, and I'm going to turn the mic over to Mrs. Hahnis, who's our moderator, and Mrs. Hahnis will direct you on the closing statements.
I think it was very, very enlightening. And now we're gonna have the closing statements in two minutes for each of you, and we're gonna start with Patsy.
Thank you. I don't have much to say to close. I just want to encourage everyone to go out to vote, that's what's important. Early voting starts on April 25th, election is on May the 7th. There's two propositions also going to be on the ballot. I encourage everyone to read those propositions, because there are some good propositions out there, and they, and the way it's worded, it's really hard to understand what it's really being said. But all I want to say is everybody just, you need to go out to vote, that's what has to happen.
I just want to say I appreciate people's time. I've been going around and I've visited with a few people, and I appreciate the reception and the visits that I've had. I want to remind people to respect and appreciate our city staff in times when the jobs they have to do are actually very difficult. They can't wave their wands and do things magically and fix problems, and we have a lot of very hard-working people out there, and I appreciate them and the work that they do every day.
I just wanted to close by saying that we do have a very wonderful city, we have a very wonderful city staff, they do a wonderful job for us, and we are blessed because we are close to all the big cities, Houston, San Antonio, Austin, Victoria. We're close to I-10, we got 71 coming through town, 77 coming through town, so we have an opportunity for things to, to be as good as we can for our, for our area. We got the rolling hills, we got beautiful trees in the town, fantastic river access that we need to use more. We do have a hard-working culture here that a lot of places don't have. A low taxing, great service, low crime. It's no wonder people want to move here from out of the big city, and even from states outside of Texas. So I would appreciate your vote, I would love to be able to be back on city council, helping the city make the right decisions as we move forward, and serving all the citizens in the, in the city, as well as working. Thank you for your vote, thank you for your opportunity to be here.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming and giving us the time to speak. I know in 87, I went to Air Force and went to Latin Air Force Base, and I said if I ever got out of Texas, I would be back. Who knew? You know, 12 years ago, I'd come here for a job, and I would call it home. I brought my wife and kids here, and it's a great place, and I love that community welcomes you, and just thank you, everybody.
I'm very thankful for the opportunity to come and talk to you all this, this evening. If there's anything I want you to take away from tonight is that I am committed to listening to all of you, not just those that are outspoken. I'll assess both sides of every issue, draw my own conclusions, I'm determined to find common ground, develop solutions, and analyze, and analyze information objectively, which will be an asset to the city council as we make critical decisions. Your vote makes a difference, and your opinion matters. I respectfully ask for your vote and look forward to serving you. Together, we can make LaGrange even better for all citizens.
I want to thank the city, thank y'all for having us, and I just hope that people go out and vote and pick the best one they think that's gonna be good to help people. I want to help my people on my ward and everybody in all wards, to listen to them and find out what I want for the city to do for them. Thank you.
I believe this concludes our meeting tonight, and thank you all.
Thank y'all.